Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman Dan Dahl.
Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Dear Lord, please watch over our mayor and his council to work together for the future of this city and its citizens and make the growth of the city go forward through Christ our Lord.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Pro temp Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Marcot.
Here.
Councilmember Warren White.
Here.
Councilmember Troy Como.
Here.
Councilmember David Merrill.
Here.
Councilmember Ron Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Dahl.
Here.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment cards? At this time, I ask everybody to silence their phones and we move on to item 2A.
Acceptance of the minutes, regular meeting of March 18th, 2025, but been published on March 26th, 2025.
Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Temp Ricky Gonsalas, second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Does anyone have any remarks on our meeting of March 18th? Hearing seen none, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, 3A.
Ellen Mullen to address the council regarding the Books Along the Tesh Literary Festival.
Good evening and thank you all for having me this evening. This is going to be our ninth Books Along the Tesh Literary Festival that we've had, and we're really know that it's going to be one of our best. You have your cards and you can see we have a packed lineup of people and events that are going to be happening. So it is going to be Friday, April 4th through Sunday, April 6th. It is going to take place mostly all along Main Street in several different venues. We're using The Shadows, The Slimin', The Steamboat Pavilion. We'll also be in the park. It's a cultural festival. It's not really just a literary festival. So if you look at it, I mean, we've got music, we've got dancing, we've got really good Cajun cooking, and so there's really something for everyone. So it's not just your ordinary run-of-the-mill festival, is what we like to say. We have nine paid events, but we have about 30 events total. The rest of the events are free. Our nine paid events are the Jazz It Up Opening Reception, which takes place on the grounds of The Shadows on the Tesh. The Bunk Johnson Brass Band will be there, and we always have a nice turnout and it's a beautiful evening. Then we have the Mystery Bus Tour, which is done by Amanda Shackelford, and we'll be starting that at the Bazuz with a catered lunch. And then we take people all around the Iberia on a bus and we show them a lot of the spots that are mentioned in the Dave Robey Show novels and James Lee Burke's novels. And so we've, people have really enjoyed that in the past. The other paid event, one of the other paid events is the Great Southern Chef Seafood Demo, and this year, our Great Southern Chef is Chef Celeste Gill, and she'll be making shrimp and alligator kebabs, and we do that in the Pavilion, the Steamboat Pavilion. We have a Great Southern writer this year. She's Mary Kay Andrews. She's written over 20 novels, and several of those have been New York Times bestsellers. We are also having Saturday Night of Fado Doe, which will take place in the Steamboat Pavilion again, and Terry Hugall's Jambalaya Cajun Band will be playing. And it's going to be catered by Bon.
Bon Creole.
Bon Creole. Thank you. During the event, I mean, we have every kind of tour you can think of. We've got walking, bus, boat, kayak, bike tours. So we're really promoting our city, and I'd like for you guys to, you know, get on board as much as possible and help us with this, getting the word out to your constituents, letting them know about all that's taking place. Just to mention a few of the free events that are going to be happening, we're having two events back-to-back about storytelling, and that's Barry Jean Osale and Darryl Bork will be leading those up. Barry Jean Osale was a professor at UL for many years. We have a couple of true crime novels, well, they're actually not novels, but they're based on true stories that the authors are going to be presenting about. We've got two traitors, Mary Perrin and Koby Abar, who will be doing a panel about traitors. We've got a writing track that's going to talk about critiquing, illustrating, marketing your book, and even one that's going to talk about travel writing. We have a book fair on Saturday, all day, with adult and children's authors all up and down Main Street. The children's authors will be in Rodriguez Park. And then we have Dr. Phoebe Hayes and Margaret Simon are going to be doing a presentation on their brand-new book that's out on Emma Wakefield. Then, of course, we close the whole weekend with Symphony Sunday in the Park. So it's, I haven't even touched on several of the events. It's all on your card, and I encourage you to just go through and pick out all the ones that you guys want to be at this weekend, and we hope to see you and we hope to see a lot of your constituents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do. Appreciate it very much. A lot of hard work goes into this one, so thank you. Hope the weather's good. Yeah. I'm hoping.
And they're people from all over the country.
I know.
Coming in, so it's kind of fun to be with them.
Cool. Good stuff. Madam Clerk, 3B.
Cataline Terrier to discuss National Crime Victims Week. So I'm not Cataline Terrier.
About to say, I thought something changed.
Yeah, she actually got taken sick and she asked me to stand in for her. So April 6th through 12th, 12th is National Crime Victims Week, and every year, Voice has been doing a victims rally. This is going to be the 20th year that they're doing this, and it's going to be, this one is going to be specifically dedicated to the memory of Bo Dewey, the late district attorney. And so it's going to be Thursday, April 10th, at the Steamboat Pavilion. So what's nice about having it there is it can be rain or shine because it's covered. And they do have representatives from various victim services, agencies, and programs are there to provide information and to answer any questions. And so, and our mayor, every year, does a proclamation proclaiming it, Crime Victims, National Crime Victims Week. So that's a great thing if y'all can come out. It's Voice for Victims Rally. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, 4A.
Resolution number 2536, a resolution awarding contract to Glen Laje Construction LLC for the 2025 City of New Iberia Asphalt Reconstruction Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Councilman David Merrill and Councilwoman Brooke Marcot, and do you want to tell us about it? This is awarding the first part of our $17.1 million of roadwork, which is exciting. It's the first bid. Next bid's April 24th, and then after that, we have a bid on the overlay. But do you want to tell us about it?
So basically, this is the first of three projects. This is basically just for asphalt reconstructions. So we took, we took those streets and we put them in a project of their own just because of the type of construction. It complicates things. You have the more, you have more ability to manage and control this. We ran into some problems along the last project where we had everything smooshed together. You know, things not getting done in a timely manner and whatnot. And you also have, you know, the most chance you may overrun a project on this type of street because we are rebuilding the whole thing from the base up. So this is the first bid, first project. We've only got one bidder, unfortunately. We don't like when that happens, but public bid process, we have no control over that. Their price came in higher. I talked to the contractor. There is a lot of work in the road business in the multiple parishes around here, so that kind of affected the ability of other contractors to bid. So it's unfortunate when we get high bids, but that's just unfortunate process that we have to work with. Like the mayor said, the next one is the concrete repair project. That's out for bid already. I've got quite a few calls inquiring about that one. We should get a good turnout as far as contractors go. That takes it the 24th of this month. And the last project, which will be the larger, largest of the three projects, is the asphalt patch and overlay. We will bid that once we get the pricing back on the next project so we can make sure we work within the budget that we have.
Good question. Yes, sir.
So do we have a start and a finish date on this contract?
No, I mean, if you award the contract tonight.
I got to go to them with the actual contract paperwork. It takes about 30 days by the time you say it's approved. Do they get, I get the contract paperwork ready, I get it mailed to them, they mail it back, it goes through, everybody's checks and balances. We have a pre-construction kickoff in about 30 days from today if you say go. And then from there, we get a schedule from them to figure out how soon it's going to start. They do have to do a bunch of sample, they have to go sample every road, so they will be, they're going to go out there and make a hole, they're going to pull material out, sample it, they're going to patch that back temporarily because that has to go through the laboratory. That takes about 30 days to get all that lab work back. So, but once they get on site and they start, they will, they should start knocking them out. But we, this contract's 160 days, about six months to do the job.
So anything that's included in diverting the traffic or whatever, they're responsible for, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Most of these are shorter roads. There's not going to be a hole, they're more secondary roads. It's just, these are the ones that were pretty much left off the last project that we couldn't get reconstructed. But, you know, going through the worst, worst street philosophy, you know, we're trying to get those taken care of because most of them are, well past their life. You know, they haven't been touched in 30, 40 years, some of them.
So I guess Darby Lane doesn't fall into this category because I don't see it.
Darby Lane's in the last project.
Okay.
The patch and overlay project.
Oh, man. So that's going to be a long time from now?
That project will bid as soon as we take the concrete. We'll bid that one probably next month. We'll go out for bids.
Okay.
But I mean, that's a, you know, from the time you bid to the time you start is about a three-month process. So that will be the last one to start, but it is in that project.
Okay. I just thought it'd be bad enough to be in this category, but I don't, I know nothing about streets. I just know it feels bad when you drive on it.
But it's an overlay, so it's not a completely destroy and bring back from the base. It's not that, it's bad? I didn't say it wasn't.
I guess it's just layers of trying to patchwork it. It just seems really terrible, so, okay.
But it's not sinking, the base isn't, isn't, it's still good. Those are the things. These projects are because the sub-base has failed, so the whole road is failing. So if you overlaid it, you'd just be, you know, throwing your money away.
Yeah. Gotcha. Thank you.
Unfortunately, we have every kind of bad streets you can have. We have examples of everything, unfortunately. Anybody else? Questions, comments? Everybody good? Thank you. Then I'd ask you to vote your machines. Great, we starting. This is good. Thank you, sir. Yeah, go. Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll talk to you tomorrow about some of the other stuff.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. 4B.
Resolution number 2537, a resolution awarding contract to Southern Constructors LLC for the Pepperplex Access to Queen City Drive Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Mayor Pro Temp Ricky Gonsalas, Councilwoman Brooke Marcot, this is a $413,000 project, and this gets us our second way out for the Pepperplex. It's certainly needed. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Didn't we move 400 or?
We moved 400, sir, so I had to come up with $13,000 more, sir.
I remember that, see that?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a good, that's a good thing, yeah.
That's pretty close.
And I don't think.
If you finish selling, that was that close.
It is close. But anyway, so we did find the $13,000 so that we could, you know, award this. There wasn't much you can cut because it's a limestone road, it has a base, we have to cross that canal, so, you know, there are just some things that have to happen, so there really wasn't anything to cut out of it. But yeah, it was close.
And no change orders, I assume, or something? I didn't see any on the bid.
We just, we just awarded the contract, so I don't think we'll have any.
Yeah, it's got to be a straight road.
Those come after, as we all know, but I think we got a good contractor, he's local. I think we're going to be fine.
Should be good. Pray for good weather.
Yeah, you're right. Yes, sir.
Glad to see you, local.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Me too. Everybody good? No other comments? Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. 4C.
Resolution number 2538, a resolution approving certificate of substantial completion for the Loves Travel Stop Sewer Utility Extension Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Second.
Councilman Troy Como and Councilman Warren White, thank you. This is the project that we, was an incentive project for us to get the Loves in the city. So Loves did come into the city, we annexed, it's open, so is Dunkin' Donuts and Godfather's Pizza, so that's a really good thing. If you hadn't tried it, it's all good. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Mayor, doesn't it have a ribbon cutting this week?
Yes.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Yes. Yeah, we have a bunch of ribbon cuttings coming. We have the, the more, Steamboat, we have Steamboat Pavilion tomorrow, we have Loves on Thursday, and then the following week, we have, the 14th, we have Ann Street Park. And we're about to squeeze another one, but anyway, yeah, a lot of things are happening. Any other questions or comments? Everybody good? Then please vote your machines. Thank you very much. 4D.
Resolution number 2539, a resolution approving change order number one for the Neighborhood Investments Downtown Neighborhood Association American Rescue Act project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Move.
Councilman Ron Davis, I need a, Councilman Warren White. Okay, I have some good news on this one. Sometimes things work out, okay? And this worked out to a $200 advantage. We were cleaning the existing duck work. This is at the Masonic Lodge. This was the Ann Street Neighborhood Association's project that they would do with their $60,000. We were going to clean the existing duck work. One, it was in very bad shape. We got the new units in and we realized for $200 less instead, and they were rusty on the exterior, instead of cleaning them, we could get all new duck work, and it actually ended up being $200 cheaper. So not only did we put three brand-new units there because this is a community building, you know, a lot of people are going to use it, we got all new duck work. So, and it was cheaper. That doesn't happen often, so relish the moment because normally, you know, I change orders going the opposite direction. Anyway, so questions or comments?
I say it's all good news.
Let's vote before they change.
Let's go for it.
Okay. All right. Well, then, if you don't mind, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. 4E.
Resolution number 2540, a resolution approving change order number one for the City Prosecutor Office remodel project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
So move.
Mayor Pro Temp Ricky Gonsalas, Councilman Ron Davis. This one and the next one are just two. This is the remodel project downstairs for the City Prosecutor's Office, and we've had a couple of hidden things and a few things pop up. One is $2,000, the next one is $1,000, so I kind of cover them both at once. But they're just, we unseen conditions, and when you start taking ceilings out and taking walls down, you know, some of these things are going to happen. Any questions or comments? Everybody good? Then please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, 4F.
Resolution number 2541, a resolution approving change order number two for the City Prosecutor Office remodel project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Move.
Mayor Pro Temp Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman David Merrill, thank you. This is another one. It's $1,000. It's kind of the same thing. Is there any questions or comment on this item? Same project. Seen none? Please vote your machines. Thank you very much.
Should it be close? Once completion is expected, I want to ask.
I don't think it's going to be that much longer. A month? Completely finished?
They put in the countertops tomorrow and then they said the glass, things come in and.
It wasn't a very large project, and the guy got in and got out. It'll probably be a month before it comes to us with substantial completion and that kind of stuff, but it's, well, good, good news.
Madam Clerk, 5A.
Ordinance number 202507, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a lease agreement by and between the City of New Iberia and Copynet LLC for the lease of a copy machine for the Public Works Department and setting for public hearing on April 15th, 2025.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Councilman David Merrill.
Second.
Second. Councilman Warren White, this is for a new copy machine at Public Works. Nothing, nothing exciting, but we got to have it. Any questions or comments? Everybody good? Please vote your machines. Thank you. Joe gets a new copy machine. I'm sure he's excited. 5B.
Ordinance number 202508, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a rights-of-way agree, use agreement with Optimum for fiber internet services in the City of New Iberia and setting for a public hearing on April 15th, 2025.
I need a motion.
So move.
Mayor Pro Temp Ricky Gonsalas, I need a second. Councilman Warren White. Yes, come on up, and you can introduce yourself and tell us about it. We've met already once, but.
Correct. Thank you, Mayor, and Councilman, my name's Johnny Moyer. I'm a senior director of government affairs for Optimum. Optimum is.
A cable provider here in the state of Louisiana. We're in over a dozen parishes, and over the last two and a half, three years, we were an awardee from the state for a lot of gumbo awards, actually 10 awards across nine different parishes. We service in the western part of Iberia Parish right now, and we're looking to expand some of our network and come into the actual city limits of New Iberia here this coming year. It's one of the first projects actually in Louisiana where we're expanding, and they chose New Iberia as one of the first ones to start constructing. In the past, as a cable provider, we would go to the Secretary of State's office, file an application with them under our statewide cable franchise, and that gives us the right-of-way authority to go and build and construct and be in the right-of-way. Right now, with this new build opportunity, our cable product won't be there right of way. In the future, we'll have a cable option, won't be like your traditional cable that you've had in the past. There'll be some streaming options, kind of like over the top for our network and things like that, but because we're coming with fiber first with the internet, we can't, you know, apply for, under our state franchise. So we're going to each governmental, government entity for a right-of-way agreement. So our goal is to have a right-of-way agreement authorized so our construction teams can come in. Our plan is to build out over 11,000 homes and businesses, that's passings here in the city. It's all private investment. We're not asking for any dollars from the city, from the state, or the parish, and we want to get moving here pretty soon, but I met with the mayor and some other officials about three or four weeks ago. Senator Freddie Mills helped set that up and be happy to answer any questions for you.
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro Temp.
I'm not, thanks for your opportunity, coming into the city and providing fiber, but I had a discussion with our attorney, and I don't know if you can answer, but I directed to our attorney and passed it by the mayor. In the past, and I brought it up in the meeting, that if you ride around our city, we see the AT&amp;T and other fiber optic companies, the box is wide open, and I'll see these looking like trash in certain areas when we can't. And it seems like we hit a brick wall whenever we try to get it addressed. So I read through the agreement and I saw nowhere in agreement where something's going to happen to your company, you sell, move on, lay it on the road. There's nothing in it that says you have to clean up, maintain, or the fiber optics or the structures that are above the ground.
Or remove.
Or remove.
Thank you.
Or a map.
That's a good idea.
And by no means, I just think that, and I asked my attorney to get his advice and the mayor, that there should be something that when you say bye-bye City of New Iberia, I won't be here, he won't be here, none of these be here, that it's picked up and moved on because what I'm seeing now, I'm really not happy to see, and it's becoming a problem with us, and I've been asking the man, we just, we can't do, we can't do it unless you find a way. So I asked, I'd asked Jeff to his comments, what he thoughts about, any something that I, in fact. Go ahead.
I think it's a great idea.
And just for your awareness, when I did send the right-of-way agreement to the mayor, it's just a template, it's a starting point. We're willing to have those conversations.
That's perfect.
And we already have a pole attachment agreement with CLECO and other entities around the parish because we're, there's a few other areas that we're moving into as well. But yeah, I mean, bring, bring those questions to us.
It's not gonna be a delay, I just want to make sure that we protect our citizens.
Yeah, and 90%, probably more than 90% is all going to be above ground on the poles, and the good thing is we have these called ROLTS, they're our remote optical, they're the units, they're probably the size of this, maybe just a little bit bigger, and we're only going to have like a handful of those around the city because that will be enough capacity for the entire city. So that's, that's one good thing. It's hardly any of it is underground, so there won't be a lot of boring and things like that, so. And honestly, if, you know, we work through the agreement, be happy to have a pre-construction meeting with your staff as well. You know, we're doing that now in other areas. I think it's beneficial for both parties to do that, and that way you can have a local construction contact for us. I'm, as a government affairs, you know, work with the all officials, local, state, and federal, so if you've got an issue or you have a constituent, you know, got a line, you know, call me, things like that, so we'd be happy to work through that. But it's just a template, and if we need to, you know, work through the agreement, be happy to do that.
We have 11,000 households.
And you said 11,000 households and commercial. So are we doing all the houses?
I would say it's a very big chunk of it. It's not, it's in the first phase where we've got, it's just, it's about, say, 11,200 and some. And as we see if we, if we get, you know, good return on investment, there will be other areas, and if you'd like to privately, I can show you a map.
I would, I would like to see a map.
Okay, and I can do that. That's just proprietary information, and I can, I can, I have it, I can show you it for the minute if you'd like.
Right. Well, at the meeting, at an intended meeting, Fred Mills set it up with some elected officials from some other communities as well, like just a one-stop-shop kind of thing, and I remembered stuck that you said 11,000, and I said, well, cool, because I know my house count is 11,000 houses. So tonight, when you said that in commercial, I was thinking, okay, maybe I need to check and kind of, you know, get a map and, and see, you know, where we heading. And I have one more crazy question, then I'll turn it over. Your boxes, they're, they're an aluminum box?
I'm not for sure. I'm sorry, I'm not the construction.
Okay. And how many are you going to have?
Just a handful.
And they're going to be in my right-of-ways?
Most likely.
Okay, can I wrap them?
We've done that in other cities.
Okay, I want it in the deal that I can wrap because I've taken all of the AT&amp;T boxes and wrapped them with history. We did them on Main Street, we did them on Hopkins Street, and we picked local leaders,
We did them on Main Street, we did them on Hopkins Street, and we picked local leaders, and we kind of honored our history where our kids know what's happening, so if you're gonna give me five or six boxes, I want to wrap them.
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, good.
You'll be probably the first one, and we consider, I work in the western, so we are in twenty-one states, all the way from California, West Virginia, and then we have three up in the northeast, and a lot of times in New Jersey, the cities request something to wrap.
Okay.
So you'll be the first one, I would say, right here in Louisiana, so.
Good. And it's just an honor.
We'd be happy to do that.
Hones our history, dresses up your box, okay, I'll turn, I'm sorry, turn it back over to everybody else. Yes, sir.
Were you, in the, back to the eleven thousand number, you'll be accessible to eleven thousand properties?
It'll be over that, yes.
Give or take.
Yep.
Good.
So as, and that's just geographically, so are you capable of putting out eleven thousand two hundred signals? I guess I'm just trying to get if you, your, your potential is to, to service that amount geographically, obviously you won't get every customer, I may wish for you that you do that, but, but does that expand the number geographically?
Uh, I think to an extent it does, and we'll, I mean, this is our fiber network that we're coming in, it's GPON, and so you're gonna have upload and download speeds that will be symmetrical, and we'll move to multi-gig, and then have other products, hopefully cable here in the near future as well, so.
So when you're running the lines overhead, you'll be, I guess I'm trying to ask how you calculated that, you'll be running in front of that amount of properties? Give or take?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you want, following the meeting, I'd be happy to pull out my laptop and show the map, so.
I didn't know that was the maximum amount of signal that he could produce.
Okay, everybody got their hand up.
Not when they have a storm, do it interfere with the service? How would that, you know, because I know some.
It does at times, I mean, for the most part, we've done pretty well. I know in twenty-twenty with, you know, we had two hurricanes, you know, pretty much back-to-back hit the same spot. We rebuilt it from nothing in a matter of just a few months, and haven't had any issues, but you know, a lot of times theft is actually one of our biggest reasons why we have a lot of outages. You, people think it's copper, and it's not, and they'll cut something, and next, you know, half the city's down. That's one of our biggest ones, but for storm-wise, we actually done pretty well over the last few years.
And like just a little thunderstorm, like, you know.
No, you should be fine. Unless, unless power's out, that's another thing. People think, you know, if the power's out, you know, they should still be getting the internet, and I tell them, gotta have some power, so, yeah.
Yes, ma'am, and then I'm calling you after.
So how is this different than LUS? Like him coming here, talking to us, but LUS Fiber was able to just kind of dig in the right-of-ways?
Yes, Brooke, Councilman Markott, you're exactly right, because I didn't even know LUS was here, and I started getting calls, why were these boxes in people's yards? And that happened just last week.
It's a bad situation, so I'm really confused, like, I'm glad you're here, this is what I want.
No, I agree, but he's coming, he's asking, and I told him.
He's doing the right stuff, I like that.
I told him when I met him, you know, we're trying to pass an ordinance that controls all this stuff, which we still are working on.
Yeah.
Because LUS was a big surprise, in squirrel run, when people started calling, and other places. People started calling me, I got a blue box in my yard, and I don't know what it is.
Right.
You know.
When I first met the mayor at that initial meeting, I told him, I said, listen, we, we could go to this state and tell, tell them, hey, we're gonna add New Iberia to our cable franchise, and then build it and be in your right-of-way, and, but we knew that cable product wasn't gonna be there right-of-way, and I said, we need to go get the right-of-way agreement, let's do it the right way and come this way, and so I, I've seen other companies do that, and it's hard to get them out sometimes, because people sign up, and next you know, you've got your constituents, you know, who are upset because they might like it, but I just was transparent with him from day one and saying, hey, anything we can do to help get a right-of-way agreement, New Iberia's first on our list to start construction, and be happy to, you know, come in and be able to service your constituents.
I appreciate that, and it's good to have a point of contact if something does go wrong, if a wire is cut underground, if y'all do have to bore at any point, because, okay, yeah, LUS left some messes behind, and I don't even know where to begin.
That we still do, I don't either.
Yeah, we're gonna deal with it a long time.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either, that surprised me when I started getting this week.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm excited to hear that the competition is coming into the area, mainly costs prohibitive, I don't know how competitive you are with the other two providers, but we are looking for a little relief. I understood you to say that it is strictly fiber and internet at this time. How soon do you see the cable coming in and the streaming as you spoke of?
I don't have an answer just yet, I know it's in the pipeline in the future, whether that's a year or two years, I hate to give you an answer and not come through with you on that. I apologize.
So with your internet, as you're speaking of, if you had to say, I'm sure you looked at the comparisons, how are we standing?
I would say for us to have such a very large investment into the community and have so many passings, and looking at who our competition is, I think it would be a waste of money to build such a large network and not be able to get any customers, so I would imagine that we're gonna be very competitive when it comes to it.
Good answer, no.
From the utility mayor.
Yeah, I understood you said that you did speak with CLECO already, I have a contract agreement with CLECO.
We've, we've been with a contract with them for, a pole attachment agreement with them for many, many years, I mean, we were with them all the way up in central Louisiana, all the way down to here and other areas. We, I mean, we have to, you know, use their poles, we pay a pole attachment fee annually, and that's per pole, so it's not cheap at times, so.
I ask that because it came from utility, okay?
Because Ms. Norby's gonna get him, isn't it, Norby? What's her name, Norby?
Something like that.
Something like that, I'm not, I don't remember, but she was tough.
But we've had times that we haven't been able to contact the other companies when it came down to low clearances, which, you know, codes are pretty important for the overhead equipment that comes into the area, we have bucket trucks, garbage trucks, and all these different things here, and then it becomes liabilities and stuff. So my point is, having a point of contact of, I.
I got a perfect example to answer that for you.
Talk to me.
Just, was it last week, I, I forget his, the gentleman's name, but he was from Iberia Parish, he's on the police jury, I think District Five, maybe? Warren, is that it? Okay, called me up, never, he got my number from Mr. Richard, I answered it, he said, hey, we got a down line, he gave me the address, and thankfully we had someone there in the market who was working that day, and we had it fixed that afternoon. But he had mentioned that, you know, there was a garbage truck coming or a bus later in the afternoon, and was afraid that it was gonna pull all the way down off the pole, and we were able to, you know, get there, but that's why I offered, you know, saying, have a pre-construction meeting with our team, get you a local contact, whether that's from our field service team, because we do have different teams. We got field service, who's like your technicians, who would do the hookup to your house, you've got, you know, construction, outside plant, so, you know, if there's some, something wrong further down the network that's not at your house, we have a team for that, we have a team for our head end, which is where all the electronics, and that's where everything shoots out from, that's our ISP team, so as long as we get you a local contact, and as, you know, you being on city council, you know, I share my information with city hall, if you have anything else, you can call me too, so.
So your service contracts, will they be fairly local? Is that where we have to wait a week, a couple days or so? I'm just asking.
For like a down line.
For service, yeah, down line or whatever.
No, it shouldn't take that long, no.
More business here. Okay.
I mean, you call me, I mean, they're, they're. Someone's gonna act on it pretty quick, but I'd also, you know, want to say, get you the information for our local team here as well, so you don't have to, but if, you know, comes to it, I'm always there, so.
Councilman Doll, you been waiting a while.
Yeah, we got a lot of subdivisions that's underground, all services. I just wish, if you get to the construction part of your company, is if they in the neighborhood, going underground, we'll be notified, so we know what's going on if people are digging in the right-of-ways. That's kind of what happened with.
Kind of department.
Yeah, but, you know, just so we would know what's going on, because we have a lot of subdivisions, everything's underground.
Yep, yep.
And in that case, if that was an area on the map that's here for the first phase, we do have a team that goes out and puts door hangers, saying, hey, we are gonna be working in your yard, if you have any questions, here you go, but we try our best to do that in every area that we have to go underground.
Good, thank you.
So.
Yes, sir.
When Mayor Protembrikey called me about this, we talked about some mapping or some indication of where the improvements are gonna be. And the second thing was maintaining those, because we do have some boxes and other things from other companies that are not maintained. And then the third thing would be removing the stuff when you finish with it, so.
You say removing, like, like if we were to leave, or like, or construction, like when we're done completing that part?
Well, if you're to leave, we've, yeah, we've got some AT&amp;T cables and some other things around here.
You know, we can't tell if it's good or bad. Some of it's been down for a month, so I'd like to just tear it up, not sure I can do that, we're trying to figure that out, it must not be working, because wires are hanging out or they're on the ground.
Yeah.
But I think I have some liability if I start ripping it out myself.
And then we got some big, some big AT&amp;T cables.
Big cables.
You know, the old.
We can't tell if they're good or not.
The legacy stuff with the, with the lead shielding and all that.
Yeah, we've got some that is involved in lawsuits, it's a mess.
Well, Mr. Simon, like I said, you know, it's just a template to get us started, and be happy to work with you, I got my legal counsel, we can work through it, but like to get moving pretty soon, so thank you.
Good. Anybody else? Everybody good? Thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll be talking, then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Okay, now I know we'll be talking, thank you, sir.
Fire should be hidden your way eventually.
Yeah, all right, we're on to Councilman's remarks, Councilman Brooke Markott, I'll start on your end.
Um, I think I'm good for tonight, actually. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Warren White?
I think I'm great at this time.
Okay, thank you, sir.
He had the trump, he had the trump. I'm gonna, I'm gonna trump.
Okay.
I'm gonna trump y'all, just had a short announcement, um, this, I'll wait till you finish laughing.
That might not be able.
All right, so this, this Thursday night at the pie bar, we have invited Insurance Commission Tim Teepel, the RPEC, the Republican Executive Committee is inviting him to come and speak on insurance issues in the state of Louisiana, and the possibility of some of the solutions involved, so the doors open at five-thirty, it's a free event, come in at six, they have drinks and food, and, and listen to Tim Teepel, have a question and answer, and you'll hear all about the insurance in the state of Louisiana, and what's good and bad and ugly, and the direction they want to go, so we're looking to get a good turnout in support of him. Five-thirty, doors open six o'clock, pie bar, Louisiana Insurance Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Merrill?
I just want to go ahead on and go over, last meeting that we had, we talked about the light and trying to see about getting funding and all that, I want to thank you for reaching out, Jane Bro reached out to me, and also talked to me about some grants that she's gonna be looking into, to try to see if we can help out on that situation, and I really appreciate it, give me a call on that, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I wanted to remind everyone that the mobile market will be at the Western Park on tomorrow from ten to twelve o'clock, so if you want some fresh fruits and vegetables at a reasonable price, please come out and support the mobile market. Also, Steamboat Pavilion has the ribbon cutting, I think.
Yes.
The mayor mentioned that.
The clock.
That's tomorrow also, about the same time, ten to twelve, and upcoming, the Ann Street Park ribbon cutting, April fourteenth, at two o'clock, so please come out and support, and we're glad to have you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Doll?
Mayor, I want to thank the, the city workers and even the administration, that downpour of water we got from that rainstorm that was unpredicted, really, they were out there doing the best they could to take care of our problems, and, and I'm sure we all got calls, but, and we were talking about these, the drainage was doing so good, it was making like a spiral, and it was just bringing all the leaves, and that's what people don't understand, is that after the leaves come, because we had all this wind in the past, it clogs the drain, doesn't mean our drain is clogged, it clogs the top of the drain, and then by the time, you know, the workers get out there to weather them out of pass, but you can't have them out there during that, but I want to thank them, because I seen a bunch of them out there doing the best they could, it was just something that was unpredictable, and, and people got water in their homes, got water where they never had before, yeah, and I'm just saying, some things we can't take care of, you can't predict six inches of rain in two hours, so I want to thank the city workers for being out there, and that's one thing they, we, I think we don't look at, we go to jobs, most of our jobs are like eight to five, seven, these people's always gotta go out there when the conditions are not the best, so, thank you so much for all of that, Mayor.
One more thing, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Also, on the April fourth, which is Friday, Iberia Homeless Shelter has a doughnut and coffee, if you would, come out and support from eight to ten, you know, I think it'd be nice to talk over some of the situations that we went through, and looking forward to what is out there for some of the homeless, appreciate it.
Thank you. Everybody kind of covered everything that I was gonna, you know, the ribbon cut, we just have a lot going on, which really cool is that, you know, between the ribbon cuttings, the new project, the contracts that y'all are allowing me to sign tonight, we've got